I'd like to bring the January 22nd meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Mrs. Mallow. Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor LeBeau.
Yeah.
Counselor Perry is absent. Business brought before the council consent agenda. Approval of joint workshop budget committee, school committee and town council, January 11th, 2018. Approval of regular session meeting minutes of January 8, 2018. Approval of executive session minutes, January 8, 2018. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. The planning board, the cemetery commission and the charter review commission. Correspondence received and filed. Town of Exeter resolution in supporting of amending act relating to taxation. Barbara Palatier, Newport Daily News article addressing B&amp;B and short-term rental issues. Approval of tax accessory abatements. Stonebridge fire district request for public hearing on zone change from open space to R60 for plot 221 lot 601 with planning board recommendation scheduled for February 26th meeting. Approval of resolution regarding hazardous mitigation plan accepted June 12, 2017. Approval of project purple proclamation week of January 21st through January 27th. Acting chief Patrick Jones, TPD. Approval request for Richard Armond RNA auto body 207 Stafford Road to be added to town tow list. Denise Charette, treasurer, December budget and revenue reports. Would anyone -- yeah, I'll do it. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just have one question. The January 8th, I was not here, I was absent, so should that stay abstained, absent?
Yeah, it should.
For both those items, one B and one C.
Okay, so we'll amend the approval of regular session minute meetings and approval of executive session meetings to Counselor Shabbat abstains, absent. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Anything else? I'd like to remove CA 7. Anything else?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CA 1 through 9 minus CA 7.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? CA 7, approval of project purple proclamation. Obviously, we're all working -- wearing purple for a reason. I like to say that I did not receive a tee-shirt, that's why I don't have one on. It was an oversight. Town of Tivitan Rhode Island proclamation, whereas Project Purple, an initiative of the Heron Project, a nonprofit foundation established by former NBA basketball player Chris Heron, assists individuals and families struggling with addiction. Project Purple was launched to break the stigma of addiction, bring awareness to the dangers of substance abuse and shed light on effective practices. And whereas, the Project Purple concept was developed when Chris Heron spoke at a local high school in 2011 in front of students wearing purple shirts. After sharing his story, a young woman raised her hand, stood up to speak as snickering and laughter was heard. The student said, "Thank you, Mr. Heron, for validating what we do. We are the sober students of this high school and each year we take a pledge to not use drugs or alcohol." Mr. Heron was surprised by the courage it took to stand not only -- I'm sorry, to not only stand up and share the symbolism of the purple shirts, but he was inspired to make a difference among adolescents across the United States. Now therefore, I, Denise DiMaderis, present the Tivitan Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of January 21st through 27th, 2018, as a Project Purple week in the Town of Tivitan. And I urge all citizens to celebrate and support the efforts of the Tivitan Prevention Coalition by wearing the color purple and displaying the color purple outside their homes. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept A7.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Open public forum announcements, comments and questions and presentation. Jonathan Wicks, Tivitan Fire Department firefighters, local 1703 fundraiser, March 3rd, 2018, to benefit East Bay Community Action Program. Is John here? Is the fire chief here? There must be something going on.
Madam, there is.
All right, so, I am to get the word out for FCAP fundraiser being held at the Knights of Columbus on March 3rd, 2018. FCAP stands for the community service that provides for the poor in our community by giving meals, by supplying food. They also have a pantry and the Tivitan firefighters has made this one of their missions. It's a corned beef and cabbage dinner dance Saturday, March 3rd, from 6:00 to 11:00 at the Knights of Columbus. The tickets are $25 per person or $45 per couple. Seating is limited and there is a number which I hope we put on our website. We'll put on the Tivitan website, I just decided that, with this number if you need to call people and get tickets. And please try to support this worthy cause. Joseph Armond, Lincoln Town Administrator, comments on Twin Rivers regulations. I know Joe is here. Come on forward. Do we have a microphone for Joe?
It's right there. Careful, it's wrapped up.
Yeah. Mr. Armond, the council has asked that you come here to answer some questions. I've heard you on several occasions, you're very informative as far as how Lincoln handles the casino, the revenue and several issues regarding them. I'd like to open it up to the council right now if anyone has any specific questions. I do, but if other people would like to stop. Christine, do you have -- no.
No, actually, I was gonna, thank you, I was just gonna ask, you're gonna do a presentation first or is it just?
I can do whatever, please, the council.
I think the council is very interested in how Twin Rivers is handled in your town as far as revenue. I've heard it before, but some of the counselors are new and did not hear it. So what do you do with the revenue from Twin Rivers?
So, the Town of Lincoln's revenue has been quite steady since 2015 because we are in a tax agreement with the facility that is still active. So currently, the town receives about $11 million. 7.6 million of that come from the various gaming shears, from the VLT machines and the table games. Your shear will, under the current scheme, the statutory scheme, other than the addition, I believe, of a minimum, I believe the Town of Tivitan will also receive 1.45 percent from video lottery machines and 1 percent from table games with a $3 million minimum payout. I don't know what your evaluation will be on the building regarding property taxes, but I'm sure that your assessment's well working.
That's still being worked out right now, yes.
Yes, but the taxes are both real and tangible, so I'm sure that it will be substantial. So, I came into office in 2007, the end of 2006, and at that time, the town had already had VLT machines for quite some time. The VLT machines under state, under ruling by the state did not require voter approval. They were considered an extension of the Rhode Island Lottery. The machines were installed without local voter approval and they had been for several years. So that part of the business built up in which the town received various different changes in the percentage, but overall, in 2008, I'll use the word unfortunately, all that revenue was going into the town's operating budget, which at the time was 5.2 million in gaming shear plus the taxes. So, about 7.2 million dollars had already been brought into the operating budget. Within the first year, we did what's called, we created restricted funds for what we called the overage. We were already committed to spending 5.2 million in operations, so we committed, we reserved the overage for capital projects only since 2008. And that current, that number currently, and it's been steady for several years, is currently about 2.4 million dollars a year. And it's held quite steady for the past three, three or four years. We did have a shift from the VLT machines to the table games, so we saw a slight reduction in VLT revenue and we saw an equal increase in table revenue. So basically, that's what's kept us, or why we've remained steady. We, three years ago, we again looked at the revenue and decided that with the advent of your facility, as well as Massachusetts opening, that the town wanted to reserve more of the gaming shear. So the town council, we introduced a resolution to the town council and ordinance that would further cap the gross revenues at 15 percent and put those away, which this will be our third year of doing. And we call it a budget reserve fund in the event of you taking our market share, or some of it, and our state of Massachusetts wanting if casinos open. So, that has brought our capital spending down to about 1.4 million a year in the past two years, but also it's been reserving 1.4 million in budget reserve. As of this June, June 18, the end of June, we do it as a year-end accumulation, at the end of June, we will have in reserve about 3.5 million from that secondary reserve. Only the town council can unlock that account if and when it chooses. We're hoping it stays intact until we realize the impact of other gaming. However, it is something that we undertook to try to protect our budgetary reserves. So, in total, the town currently has about 11 percent of its budget in various reserves in what we call unrestricted surplus. We have an 8 percent unrestricted surplus, we have the budgetary reserve and we have the capital reserves. So, those three reserve accounts total about 11 percent of our budget. The benefit of that, obviously, has been with our rating agencies. We have probably one of the highest bond ratings in the state of Rhode Island for a municipality of our size. And also, I think the last time I was here, I described the impact of our tax schedule over the past 10 years. I believe in the past 10 years, we've had two reductions in taxes, but we've also had some slight increases. I believe it had averaged 2.5 percent over 10 years. We also, it's allowed us in our operating budget, also we reserve all our retired debt in the last six years. So what we've done, we've taken retired debt over the past six years and put those into capital, operational capital spending for road repairs only. We currently invest 1.3 million dollars a year into road repair. That will shift over, we're currently, the voters have approved a $60 million high school project. That bond, the town is already able to pay the first $30 million of that bond with its reserve debt. And so, this lasts, so from 2008 on, this kind of planning has allowed us to minimally raise taxes when we've had to absolutely, but also to create these capital investments, which now total about $24 million, prepare to build our high school at, right now, being able to fund 50 percent of the project. And going forward, we predict it could be two, three, you will open in a year, we'll know that impact, but beyond that, there'll be several years, we will potentially have another seven or eight million in reserve in the effect our budget is impacted by other So that's how we chose to handle the shear. I think the last time I was here, my comment was quite simple. I wish I would be you when the money first came in and had done these things when the initial money arrived. We were very fortunate, we did, we were collecting money for about 12 years prior to that from VLT machines, which grew very big in the year 1999, 2000, 2001, 2002, 2003 and 2004. That money really started coming in, that's what I believe you're going to see in the next two or three years. So, I think you have an opportunity to take some different practices and implement them quickly or before this money comes in. I think you have a great opportunity. Our simple theory was capital investment not coming out of the tax levy will stabilize the tax levy for many years to come. And if you look around Rhode Island, we think that's becoming proven. There's about, you know, a $3 billion debt on schools, nobody's really looked at roads and other systems. Had we not done these things, in say two more years, we'll have invested 30 million without borrowing. That's probably 10 years out saved our taxpayers 100 million. That they would be faced with as things deteriorated further and had not been capitalized, that bill would have grown greater and greater. And many communities are facing that today with, whether it's their school buildings or other infrastructure in their community. So, this kind of planning, we believe, will benefit our taxpayers years down the road. So I guess what I'm saying is we made the option not to run and try to lower taxes, but invest it in a way that would stabilize taxes in the long term. So that was our choice, that's the choice we made, but I do believe that it's paid dividends because we consider this revenue, we classify this revenue as volatile. You simply, if you're gonna, what you spend this year, you're committed to next year. If it's an operating budget, if you put it in this year, it's gonna grow for the following year, like all your operating budget does. By avoiding that, we, the town can currently take over a 30 percent loss of this revenue, of our total revenue, before it would impact our operating budget. And I think that's another thing that you really have to be aware of, is you don't know what future competition's gonna do or what the market will do on its own. It's not a levy that you're just gonna go out and say, "Give me this much." So that's where we are financially, it is about, it represents about 11 percent of our total budget. Like I said, the cap-off amounts are there. We've discussed publicly that if the market is not really adversely affected, we can actually switch some of that later cap, the 15 percent gross, to our high school bond and basically eliminate it.
Which we want to.
So that's part of our long-term planning. So, we planned our high school six years ago, so none of this happened overnight, is what I'm trying to say. You know, the high school went into, we have a 20-year capital plan which this money flows through, which the representatives for that capital plan are from the school committee, the town administration, the budget board, the town planner, all those people sit on a capital committee and have developed this plan, which then is approved by the town council.
Are there town counselors on this committee?
Yes, there are town counselors as well. And then the town council, every five years, we've updated. Just like, very similar to what you would do with your comprehensive plan for your town.
Now, there's been a concern with the fire and police department on whether our fire and police are able to handle all the details. How have you handled that?
Well, I've looked at, so I believe you have 30 FTEs budgeted in your police department, I'm not sure what your staffing level actually is, but I believe the budget reflects 30 offices. We employ 36, so it's not.
I think we're up to 32, 31.
So we employ 36 officers, so it's not drastically different. You also have to remember, the Lincoln Casino is almost three times larger than the casino being built here in Tivitan with an event center that holds 1,000 people on top of that.
Now, do you have 24-hour coverage for police and fire?
So what, yes, so for both police and fire, so when a, the police detail runs 38-hour shifts a week. I can give you that breakdown, I have that breakdown, but basically, it's an officer in the day, an officer overnight, two officers in the evening, and on weekends, two officers. We do, we do go around 24 hours a day, so the facility's open 24 hours a day. That's a detail arrangement, the detail rate for police officers is contractually, it's in the police contract, and so what we do is the town charges an administrative fee for all our police detail, simply because we have to cover the FICR.
Exactly.
And the tax. And we also, we also put in about $2 per officer for what we consider an insurance. In other words, an officer on a detail under state law is considered on duty and if they're injured, you're going to pay their pay. So we actually reserve, we actually keep a reserve in that account. We have about $1 million in reserve in the police detail account.
Now, is this done on a voluntary basis as an extra detail, or do you actually put men there?
Well, all details are voluntary, however, the police department has its own system for seniority and right to refuse.
Oh, yes, so do we.
And canceling, but it, nobody has to work a detail. So there's some police officers that don't work it at all, and there's some that work it. So we have rules about how much they can work, so an individual officer, obviously, you know, we don't want somebody working double and triple shifts. And so we have those rules, but we've had really no issue. If the facility needs a police officer and we can't fill it because no one volunteered, which is rare, when it does happen, we assign somebody at time and a half and we build the facility for that time and a half. So there are occasions where they need an officer, we want an officer there, however, no one signed up and no one volunteered, we'll assign somebody.
So you don't have a reserve force at all?
Not at all, no. Because the, what we found is, they're on duty, they're no different than an on-duty officer. However, we've gone a little further, what we did have done is we've set up a office in the facility that only the police can access their system to do reporting. So the reporting is done from the facility by detail officers. The only time a detail, if we have a minimum manning of officers of three on duty, if an incident, an arrest at that facility causes us to go below three, the facility actually releases the detail officer on their money to come to the police station and process the incident. So that's, these are all other agreements we have in place.
And you also have state police there 24 hours?
There's a state police, they're not always there, but there is a state police squad now, since the introduction of gaming, or table games, so there is a state police present. I also believe the security force at Twin River, I'll have the numbers here, but I believe it's 120 officers who are all ex.
Yes.
They're all ex-police officers verified by the Rhode Island Lottery. So, it's a much bigger force than we, than we have.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about revenue when you guys are done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go at it. It's interesting.
Now, how about the fire department?
So the fire department, like, I'm not sure, in Tivitan, we have fire districts still.
Yeah.
So that happens to be the biggest fire district. However, the biggest fire district only has 30 FTEs, so it's full-time and some pot-time is, but it comes up to 30 FTEs. They actually supply more personnel than the police. The fire chief actually, under the state fire code, I can get you the numbers, I have them here, but this, considerably, there's actually more shifts of fire than there are police. I believe there's always two firefighters in the building, maybe with the exception of midnight, which, and I can get you that data.
And that's fully financed by that district?
That's fully funded by the facility, but it's, it's only supplied by that one district.
Right, and not the rest of your men. Okay. Any questions come from above?
Do you guys over at Twin River have a plan in place in case Twin River decides to go into sports gambling?
Yes, that is.
I don't want to say that we have a plan, we're aware, I think like you are, that there's a lot of discussion, it's in the governance proposed budget.
And I understand there's, there will be a bill on the floor?
I haven't seen one, but.
That's the rule.
Yes, so every, every indication we have is that the state intends to try to move forward with sports betting, and we're told, while I have not used our, both our good solicitor to verify this, that the only two facilities sports betting could be placed in currently in the state of Rhode Island is Lincoln or Tivitan because they're the only two local communities that have approved gaming.
So, in the big scheme of things being hindsight, you think before our contract is signed, it'd probably be a pretty good idea that we put something in writing that Twin River will be responsible for 5 percent of that or something like that?
Well, I, what I was thinking, we haven't completed the host agreement.
Correct, that's why I think we should stick it in.
The second part of the host agreement. And I discussed this with Tony, because there's a question on whether the local government, the local people will receive any revenue from this, and it doesn't sound like.
So our host agreement, and I believe yours and the solicitor can jump in, I believe it is merely a reflection of the statutory language regarding the shear from the different activities that is in legislation. And in that legislation, they asked us to acknowledge the statutory language as a host community, but we don't have a separate host agreement with the facility. All the details that I've just outlined of what you're doing right now, you're making your own agreement.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
With the facility. So what I would say is, when it comes to sports betting, if, and I certainly want to learn more about it, just like we did VLTs and table games, if the two communities are going to have sports betting, perhaps we should be sitting down with our legislators and having that conversation.
Well, I was, I was thinking of calling State Rep. Edwards tomorrow morning, 'cause with my discussion with Tony, and Tony, maybe you might want to talk with the council. It is your understanding that the local communities may not receive this revenue per statute?
Yes, there's a, the very real possibility that, A, there would be a vote like there was for the gaming vote in Lincoln and Tivitan, and that's the first issue.
So it won't be, it won't be for the voters to vote on?
That's correct. And secondly, the other issue is, is whether or not the local communities, if it's approved, if the United States Supreme Court says that sports betting is legalized, that the local communities would not get a share of the, of the revenue generated.
But if we put in a host agreement, any future revenue, including sports betting, in our host agreement, then Twin River's got to pony up?
If Twin Rivers agrees to it, because the host agreement is mutual, am I right?
One thing I don't, one thing I don't know is whether or not even Twin River is going to get a share of the revenue from that. That might be a separate income stream that is not being run by Twin River, I'm not sure how it's going to operate.
So we need to speak with our reps and our senator and try to figure this out before this is even discussed or passed?
That's correct, it's in the preliminary stages, but I think what you've done is identified all of the issues that need to be fleshed out.
Madam President?
Yes.
I thought, Tony, there was a paragraph in the host community agreement about future kinds of gambling, do you remember that?
But I think it's if they get any revenue from it, right?
Well, I think that that was not, that was not the issue at the time when we were doing it, but I thought there was one paragraph in there that it was, we talked about it and it could be that this was just somewhere off on the horizon. Do you remember it at all?
Could be, but I don't know how the state is going to structure.
So the state is the one that's gonna decide?
That's correct, yes.
That's what it sounds like. So that's why we need to get on this?
Yes.
Any other? Go ahead.
Mr. Administrator, your structure for the police department, obviously, the fire district's out of your control, but you guys have a local pension you run, or is it all through MERS?
We're a local pension.
Your local, how's funding? Are you guys directing it at the rev- Are you guys directing the revenue to bring funding status back up, or no?
Uh, we, our funding in two thousand and eight was one hundred and five percent. It dropped to fifty-nine three years ago. I believe we were going to commit at about sixty-four this year, and that was all attributed to the market loss of two thousand and eight and nine.
Are you directing any casino revenue towards that, or no?
No, nope, we, we've actually, we fund our OPEC a hundred percent, our recommended OPEC. That's by ordinance, we have a town ordinance. So the Twin River revenue, the council, since oh eight, has, has been locked down as far as any use of it. Budget board can't use it, voters can't use it unless the town council locks that, or call that lockbox of reserve. So that money couldn't be used for that unless the town council changed their ordinance.
And out of curiosity, just along that, that same vein, are you guys doing anything for OPEB, or no?
Yes, the town went into OPEB fairly early in the process when it became an issue. I believe we're in our, our fifth year, and I believe we're approaching thirty percent funded in total. So for us, like everybody else, it was a pay-as-you-go until about, for us, about four years ago.
Thank you.
And, and you know, you're bringing up examples of all these things we've been able to support just with our operating budget and still not raise taxes.
Yeah.
Madam President?
Any other questions?
Madam President?
Yep.
So some of these things, just to, to get an idea of what Lincoln does. The committee that decides on where the money is going, it sounds like it's a committee that then makes recommendations to the town council, is that correct?
No, so the, the reserve funds are established as percentages of overages, which the town council has said. Initially in two thousand and eight, it was proposed that any overage over five point two million, which was the current operating stream of revenue, would be capped at that amount and directed into a capital account only.
But that was the town council?
That was the town council. The voters can spend that capital account, but only on capital. So the voters, we have a financial town meeting, and we spend our capital through what we call res, budget resolutions. So neither the school or the town department's operating budgets receive a direct capital payment, they receive a capital item.
Which is funded by your capital?
Which is funded by the capital account. And, and since then, as I said, three years ago, the council agreed and agreed to put money aside just in the event of what competition may or may not do, and that was fifteen percent of the gross gaming revenue, which is currently about one point four million.
So this committee, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, because one of the issues in Tiverton is who's making the decisions on the money, and who's making the decisions on the, uh, committee who's going to decide this?
Well, I would defer to your solicitor, but the opinion we got and sought was this is not a tax levy revenue. Now, you're, you are going to get taxes from this facility, which I think come under your normal charter and, and as they do with us. But I believe this other revenue, a town council can direct restrict and whatnot, and that was the interpretation we worked under. We also have a budget board that can't touch this money unless they handed a, they, they can create a resolution of their own, but only for a capital event. They cannot direct any of this money, any of this additional money into the operating budget.
And to your solicitor, it's our solicitor, I imagine it's going to be the same thing?
It all comes down to your, the language that you have in your charter.
The approved charter, not just what these charter commissioners decides to write, it's whatever gets approved in the charter, correct?
It's, it's, it's the charter lawfully adopted at the time.
Okay.
Counsel Hilton?
Thank you. Mr. Almond, so the capital improvement committee that you have, the long-range planning committee, and I, and so they come up with a five-year plan? If I understand that correctly?
So the initial plan was a, what we called a twenty-year plan with an immediate five-year goal. And then every five years, the entire plan is revised to reflect what's been done, what funding sources have changed, and what projects either need to be altered, put in a different order, or put off altogether. And so the best way to explain it is that started in, I believe, we actually wrote it in oh eight when we did our initial ordinance, and it's been revised since then, and so the example I gave you is the Lincoln High School project was in that capital plan from the day it was written. But funding needed to coordinate to make the project a reality.
And how closely do you know at your annual appropriation, you know, through your financial, you know, town referendum, how closely or how successful have you been in, in having the voters appropriate out of those capital accounts to match the plan that you have?
I'm going to use one hundred percent.
Really?
Yes, we have to justify the projects, and having the plan obviously was a benefit of people to understand why you were scheduling things in a certain order, why you were prioritizing certain items over the other. And also having a budget board, I think, helped, because I have a three-month process with that board before it goes to the voters. And so they have altered some capital spending in the budget board process, but not, I wouldn't say dramatically.
And back to your public safety and your police, are you contractually obligated to Twin River to provide the police details?
No.
Okay. So if you don't have the staffing, and I know that you mentioned the callback at time and a half, but if you don't have the staffing, you simply don't have the staffing available?
Correct, correct. And, and the town still reserves the right not to provide one if it so chose. There is no contractual agreement that we are obligated to provide a police detail.
But are we obligated through some state law? 'Cause that's what I'm hearing.
No.
So we're not obligated to, to have a local presence there?
I, I think it's greatly to your benefit.
Yes, right.
Because without one, you're still going to go there.
Right.
And be picking up prisoners and processing them and taking complaints and writing, because the security does not have that authority.
Right. No, it's that word obligated that is, that I want to make clear, that we, we can do it, but we have, we can do it any way we see fit.
Yeah, that, that is aside from your host agreement with the legislature. And what I'll say, and not in anyone's defense, it's been, I think we started our police day long before the table games or the local vote. I want to say it was in the late nineteen nineties that we actually went in, we, before then, it was very informal, police officers could go work there for Twin River. A detail was established, and I can't think of a single conflict with the facility since the late nineteen nineties.
Madam President?
And are your, are, are your detail rates with Twin River negotiated, or are they the standard rates that you would have for any detail?
They're, our standard rates are negotiated through our contractual agreement with the police officers. Before that, the town set it, and three years ago, we agreed to let it come into their collective bargaining agreement. It's currently about, I want to say it's forty-six dollars an hour with a five-dollar minister, so the officers get forty-one dollars an hour, and on holiday, it's time and a half. The forty-one dollars an hour, we call it an inside detail, that goes right through the weekends, Monday through Friday. There's no change in the rate except for holiday. On traffic details, weekends, extra hours, they bring time and a half sooner if they're out doing a traffic detail. And it's all negotiated in our collective bargaining agreement.
And, and I realize the fire district is a little out of your control, but I, maybe you know the answer to this. The particular fire district that has Twin River within its jurisdiction, is that a fire district that has a lot of residential or commercial to cover? Or is Twin River sort of their biggest entity?
I think probably a better way to understand, or to look at your question is the town of Lincoln provides what we call rescue service. That is a municipal function, so the fire districts send an engine for a rescue.
Ah, but you send the ambulance.
So the town employs all the emergency medical services. And so that, I think, depending on what your district makeup is or your town makeup, essentially, we've had no problem in either area, the district has had no problem supplying firefighters. And as I said, they actually, we're, we're at thirty-eight hour shifts with the police, I believe they're closer to forty a week. And I don't, I'd have to let somebody from the facility speak to whether or not, they're all filled, but I believe they are. And so our EMS people don't get in that detail at all.
Okay.
There's no town employees on the fire detail.
But you do say, but it's, but it's your ambulance is that?
Correct, yes. We run two rescues full-time in the town of Lincoln. They, the two rescues do about forty-six hundred runs a year between the two of them, including Twin River. Out of the forty-six hundred runs, I believe about two hundred and eighty go to that facility. So it's certainly not, it, it's a big number, but it's a low percentage for our runs. Our mutual aid, because we're in Northern Ireland, Providence County, our mutual aid is about four hundred runs a year outside of the town.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Randy?
You got, you answered one of them with the rescue, but how many police calls a week do you get there? And how bad are the crimes, are they?
What we, what we concentrate on with that is what we call the arrest, because the incident reports are done right there. And whereas, if somebody's making a complaint, but there's no arrests, it's done by the detail officer. The only thing the detail, and the detail officers also affect arrests. The only thing they don't do is if we have enough manning, we'll transport and book. Most of these arrests don't even get that, they're called summons arrests, because they're, vast majority are misdemeanors. I have the numbers for you. I believe misdemeanor arrests out of the facility are running us about three point eight a week if I take a yearly average. There's only a very few felony arrests in the facility. Majority are for crimes what we call trespass and remain, and that's generated from your, you're removed from the facility last week, you reappear this week, that's a trespass, or you sign yourself out because you have a gambling problem, and then you try to come back in. That accounts for probably the most arrests, that type of, that type of crime. And I do have, I can give you numbers, I have them with me, I just have to find them.
All right, I'd like to know what the felony arrests are, those little misdemeanor ones, it's not really?
The felony arrests are very rare, but I can give you the numbers.
Any other questions from the council?
On the arrests, and you may not be able to answer this question, obviously, you know, you may have your own internal security and, and work with police, so I'm not asking you to divulge something that, that you can't. I, I do know that recently there was a more serious incident, not that happened at Twin Rivers, but was reported in the news with someone who had stalked someone.
The Massachusetts incident where the woman was followed home?
Where the woman was followed home. Are your police resources involved in, and again, I'm not asking you to tell me your strategy?
Well, I can answer yes, because the facility, the reason, the answer is yes, and so won't the Twin River security, because everything that happens in that facility is filmed on digital film. Everybody that's near somebody, everybody that's accosting somebody, everybody, so literally, you'll actually trace that incident without divulging exactly what they did, you'll trace that incident back to its origin, and that whole entire pot, including going out to the cars, will be on film. So the filming, which is used in almost all the arrests in the facility are filmed, for lack of a better word. So things do extend outside, but usually the investigation will come back. I can tell you that Twin River or the state police squad has worked with our department or, or any other department on any single incident that originated in the facility.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I want to thank you very, very much for helping us.
Good luck.
We reserve our rights to ask you back if we could at any point, because we do have a lot of questions and we're brand new with this. But thank you so much for spending time with us.
I'd be happy to come back whenever, but good luck with it and.
Get you a chunk of supporting revenue.
Yeah. I told you last time, I say I wish it was in your seat.
I wish you were too.
Yeah, I was just going to say I wish you were too, thank you. Yeah. Public hearing, advertised public hearings, public hearings on zoning ordinance, Article Six, Section One, yard regulations in Article Six, Section Three, accessory structures, and Article Two definitions, and Article Five, Section One, district dimensional regulations, a planning board recommendation. Tony, do you want to start us off, or?
Actually, I think it's appropriate to have Mr. Hardy come up and do the introduction first, I'd be happy to comment after he does.
Stu, are you around? There you are.
Yes, I'm Stu Hardy, fifty-one Summer Field Lane, and Chair of the Tiverton Planning Board. Back in April of two thousand and seventeen, the town solicitor sent you a memo pointing out an ambiguity in our zoning with regard to accessory structures in front yards, side yards, and backyards of residences. And accessory structures are, are small detached structures like storage sheds and gazebos and garages that are incidental and depend on the use of the, the home, so we all have those in our yard. But because of this ambiguity between two sections and zoning, the zoning board of review was having a hard time determining whether or not somebody could have an accessory structure in their front yard and side yards, or, or if the accessory structure was restricted to the backyard. So you referred that to us this past spring, and we probably had four sessions at, at the planning board. We decided to take a broader look and also take a look at the setback requirements for accessory structures, the height limits on accessory structures, and the total footprint of an accessory structure, to make sure that we, we were, first of all, being fair to homeowners who need to build these things and not putting a burden on them, but also fair to the neighbors so that people couldn't build huge buildings and call it an accessory structure. So that's, we wrapped up our deliberations in December, and I sent you our recommendation with a cover letter, I think on December sixth. And so let me just very quickly say that what we did, what we did is we decided that an accessory structure belongs, that an accessory structure should not exceed twenty-five feet in height or, or the height of the roof beam, whichever is higher. That it, that it should not be more than thirty-six by twenty-four feet, which I think is eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. And that, and that footprint will accommodate a three-car garage, so that's pretty generous as well. And then finally, we decided that an accessory structure should, should, could be put in a setback. The setback, I think, is twenty feet, but not closer than five feet to the, to the property line. So basically, that's what we did, and we also redefined, put a new definition of, of an accessory structure. The old, the, the existing zoning has the definition of an accessory use, and use was confusing people, because they were saying, well, this is, this is a use or a building. So we got rid of that and we went to accessory structure. So it's clear that we're talking about the building itself, or the facility itself. So basically, that's what we did, and, and we, and we restricted accessory structures to backyards. So did, I think I have defined everything we did.
Any questions from the council for Stu?
Madam President?
Council Edwards?
Couple of questions. So three-car garages, those are okay, but four-car garages, those are not okay? Four-car garage, not okay?
Four-car garage is not okay, we, we had a long discussion about this, some people wanted actually to restrict it. Some people wanted actually to restrict it to a two-car garage. The realtor on our, on planning board, Carol Guimond, who gives us a lot of really good information, said, look, a lot of people are going to three-car garages, why don't you accommodate that? So we agreed to accommodate that. But anything larger than a three-car garage, that, that gets pretty big.
So, so with a three-car garage, that's okay, but in-law apartment above the three-car garage, where it would make the building taller than twenty-five feet, not okay?
If the building, unless the, unless the principal structure is higher than twenty-five feet, if the principal structure's roof ridge is, let's say, twenty-eight feet, then you can go up to twenty-eight feet. You can break the twenty-five-foot limit. But you can't, you can't have an accessory structure that's bigger than the principal structure.
So the question I, so you say, we could go up to twenty-eight feet, but it says here in the wording that whichever is shorter, twenty-five feet or the height of the principal structure, so that seems to stand in contrast to what the language is.
I thought it was whatever is, is larger.
On that seat, the height of the ridge.
Of the primary structure, whichever, or twenty-five feet or the height of the ridge, whichever is shorter. So that's, that's definitely not the case in this proposed language. So you're pretty much, you get, you get, like, so if your house is sixteen feet tall, you can go up to sixteen feet tall, but if you, if your house is thirty feet tall, you can only be twenty-five feet tall in the accessory structure, the way that it's written.
That's not how I understand.
Yeah, no, my, my impression is that you can go up to the height of, of the roof ridge of the house.
Tony, how do you read this?
Shorter should be larger.
Oh.
That, that was a typo.
Shorter should be larger.
All right.
Okay.
And then the other, the other question I have for you, when you guys were considering this, was there any discussion about, especially in the zoning in, in South Tiverton, when you have the principal structure where it is setback, let's say, let's say you're in, you know, you're in an R-sixty zone, and the principal structure's setback a hundred-and-twenty feet? So in that instance, you wouldn't be able to put something in front of the house, even if the property is shielded by trees and all that sort of stuff. You're, you're stuck. And, and how does that play out when you have a homeowner who has built on the back end of the property and has nowhere else to go but in front? Was that discussed at all? I have, I know people in town who've had this conundrum before.
The, in, in that instance, I believe the homeowner would be able to go to the zoning board of review for dimensional relief, and would have, and would have a hardship to share with zoning board of review, and so would probably be granted that relief in that instance. But we didn't want to grant it as right, as a right, because if you do that, then people will be popping sheds and garages up in their front yards, and I don't think we want that, at least the planning board doesn't think that's a good idea.
And is this gonna apply to, is this gonna apply to all zones, right?
Yes, yes. Yeah. Yep.
Councilor Hilton?
So Stu, I totally get the idea, we don't want people to have pool cabanas in their front yard, but like Counselor Edwards, I'm really worried about this in the more rural parts of town, and I'm particularly worried about the agricultural properties. For example, you know, by right, if you can have a farm stand, but nobody's gonna put the farm stand at the back of the property. It's gonna be in the front by the road, that's where the farm stand goes. And, you know, when you think about some of these agricultural properties, you know, it's not uncommon that the way that they've been developed, especially if they're larger, is that, you know, there may be a long driveway, and the house is set at the back, but there may be, you know, farm buildings that are in the front. They may be well-shielded from the road, they might be bucolic and beautiful. So this really worries me, especially about that kind of agricultural property, whether it's a commercial agricultural property, it's just somebody's gentleman farm, and things like farm stands. And even the limit on the size of the accessory structure, again, for that kind of agricultural operation, I mean, if you wanted to build yourself a, you know, five-stall horse barn on your, you know, twenty acres that you have, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four square feet isn't gonna do it. So I do think that while, again, I do understand the point of what we're trying to do, I'm not sure that this fits all of the various parts of Tiverton. I think maybe we need to think about this a little bit, because I do understand zoning relief, obviously, but I think this might be asking people to get an awful lot of zoning relief in certain places.
Let me just ask Tony, wouldn't some of those, a barn, for example, wouldn't that be taken care of in the use table for agricultural? So what we're doing here is, we're not defining everything. This is supplemental to what is already in the use table. We are not amending the use table for all of the zones in town.
I just did a cursory read of it when I saw this, because I was concerned of that, and there is nothing in the language that allows, unless you're, for example, developing a commercial riding stable, right? You've got a, a riding stable, which is a commercial entity, and then the barn becomes the primary building. But if you're simply someone who wants to have horses on your property, or donkeys, or your cows, or whatever it is, that's, the only place that it falls into our zoning code is, is an access, accessory structure to the primary house. So I'm tempted to think that we might need to rethink this a little bit, because I think the, maybe the focus was on, you know, the denser neighborhoods where, as I said, we don't want people putting pool cabanas in their front yard, but it's forgetting the agricultural-type development that you see in some parts of South Tiverton, and even in some parts of northeast Tiverton. And I, I'd hate to see, for example, you know, every farmer have to go to zoning to get zoning relief so that they could have a farm stand, which is, by the way, permitted by right in our zoning code, that that is permitted by right as a use, but now it would be in conflict with the location of the structure being in the front yard as opposed to the backyard.
Madam President?
Councilor Bob?
What Counselor Hilton said is true to farmers, but it's also true for somebody in North Tiverton as well, if their house is built in the back of the lot. You don't want to put your garage in the back of a lot. We need, we need to do something, but we don't want to take their rights away if that, all they have is a front yard, and we don't want to send them to zoning, because it's tough enough to get stuff done.
So Susan Gill, our administrative officer, would like to make a comment.
Hi, Susan Gill, Planning Board member. Just to go a little further about what I think our thinking was, when we were at the zoning board, we were finding that they were having a difficult time interpreting side yard, rear yard, and front yard, and to try, and it seemed like it varied from one zone to another what applied, so what is in the R-thirty is very different than what's in, in rural Tiverton. So as we went through it, we were trying to figure out a way to make, to standardize the, the use, and then we felt like it was more reasonable, because we talked about South Tiverton and the, the different uses, and like, if somebody wanted to put up a big barn. But rather than try and define each zone with a different use and what would define rear, side, and, and front yard, would be to, then, if they wanted to put up a barn, they would have to go to zoning to get relief. And we felt like that if we could standardize it, it was up to the individual person and to make their case for the zoning board to determine if, if they wanted to grant that based on, if they wanted to do larger size, if they wanted to change the height. I mean, that's certainly their prerogative, but it wouldn't be written somewhere than leaving it for somebody to interpret in the building office, or the planning board, or whatever, but that they would then go to zoning and make their case for each time somebody wanted to put up a big barn, or a larger garage, or a, a taller structure. So that, basically, the rule that, or the ordinance that we set up would apply both to the R-eighties district and the R-thirty, because we talked about it, we didn't really want a lot of accessory structures put in the front yards up in North Tiverton. And if you start making exceptions, and that's what was happening for rear yard, side yard, front yard, you're constantly running into problems, because the zones are set up very different in how the structures are and the locations of buildings. So that's kind of where we went with it. We, we went around with it a lot. We gave a lot of consideration, if you want to adjust it, but then you're gonna start making exceptions. You're writing an ordinance with exceptions. We were trying to get away from that. And put it to the individual homeowner, to create, to, I guess, provide the exception to the zoning board and let them decide on legality of it.
That's putting mountains of red tape in the way of anybody who wants to do something, if they got the property to do it.
But the way the zoning ordinance is written now, there's so many exceptions, and there are so many that you read them, and you don't know, it, it was, the zoning board didn't know how to interpret what's considered a rear yard in North Tiverton, what's a rear yard in South Tiverton. They can be very different creatures, and so they were, they just needed a, a cleaner definition of what determined these things. And if somebody wants to build a barn, then we felt like they had a right to make their case to the zoning board, but that, to make that exception, then how do you write an ordinance that, for that situation would apply to North Tiverton or even the Stonebridge area? It just, it adds a lot of layers into trying to write up zoning ordinance.
Can I actually say something on this, because?
Yeah.
Excuse me, and thank you, Susan. Stu is correct. We were having some difficulties in the zoning board in making the determination, because it was conflicting language in, in the, there's conflicting language in the existing ordinance for what type of accessory structures can go into the front yard. So we did suggest this, and I, I do think that the planning board took that to heart and, and came up with this, these regulations. But, and I, I know, you know, you don't want to have exceptions in the, in the ordinance, but I would, if, if this could be continued for a month, so that this can go, I just, there's some suggestions that I have on this, just to address these specific concerns, and some of the concerns that I had a year ago, just to incorporate some additional language, which I don't think will be burdensome on the interpretation for the zoning board, but will address some of the concerns that have been raised. If we could hold this out for a month, this has been going on for a year, the work has been great, but I, I would like the opportunity to just suggest some language on this, if I may.
Sure.
I think that, that, I think that sounds good. I mean, I'm normally kind of a stickler for zoning, and I understand the, you know, the, the point of zoning relief, and often say, that's where you're supposed to go, but this sounds like we'd be sending an awful lot of people to zoning, for zoning relief.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm concerned about that also. This, this language does clear up the ambiguities that we had originally identified, but there are some circumstances, I think, that should be addressed in the zoning ordinance to kind of bring this thing full circle.
Well, you look at that, keep the people of Tiverton in mind, not just the zoning and, and all these rules and red tape. You gotta keep the folks of Tiverton who pay the taxes in this town in mind. They don't want to be running into boards and commissions to put a garage up where they have all the room, and, you know, it's, just keep that in mind while you look at it.
It may be an extra step that they won't understand either, and they may just think, I'm looking at this, I can't put a barn up. You know what I'm saying? So I think we need to.
Yeah, there's, I just have some, this, this addresses the, the true ambiguity that was the impetus for this, but there are some instances that I do think need to be specified on this, so it's just gonna be clear. And, you know, I do want to make it, make sure that the residents have a clear direction as to where they go, but also the zoning board too, so that we can have an efficient administration of the town's land use regulations. And I think it's not going to be difficult, and I, I think the planning board did some good work, but I just have some tweaks.
Tweak it in the favor of the people, not of the zone.
I just have a, Joan? Councilor Shabok, go ahead.
And I, and I certainly agree with the horse barn, the farm stand, because that was on my list. And certainly, I agree with, some houses were built on the backside, so that they were farther away from the road, so they wouldn't hear traffic, and now they have no place to put a structure, a garage. There's no garage attached to the house. And that has an impact on the selling value of that home, in my opinion. So my question is, why can't an accessory structure be in the front yard? Why can't a gazebo be in the front yard? Why can't a garage be in, why can't a shed be in a front yard? Or, as this states, it can't be in front of the, the main building, the, the principal building. If it's in front of it by two feet or three feet, you can't have it. Certainly, from my perspective, my shed is in the backyard where I store my plow. So in order for a snowstorm, I have to try and get that plow across my lawn to the road to get to my driveway. So if my shed was a little bit in front of my house and closer to the road, it would be less burdensome for me to get that plow from the back to the front of the, the house and, and to the road, and my driveway. So I want to know why. What is the purpose of not having any accessory structures in front of the house?
Well, that, that's a policy.
And you can answer it later, but I, I just need to know why. So whoever can put that information together, I would appreciate it.
Do you want me to answer that?
Can you?
Yes, I can, actually. That's a policy consideration.
Right.
Your, your typical zoning ordinance, and that's most of the zoning ordinances in the state, do have prohibitions for accessory structures in the front yard of the property for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is, you know, not, not just the visual, but also for safety considerations and everything else. So that's what it is, but that's policy consideration. Every town's different.
And I think I, I need to know the reasons. Like, if, if it's setback from the front, is it gonna impact anybody's line of sight for traffic? Yes, I can understand that, but that should be taken care of with setbacks. So again, why can't a gazebo, if it's within the setbacks, why can't a gazebo be in the front yard? So I just need to know the reasons why. There has to be, if someone's doing it, there has to be a reason why, or reasons.
Well, this was decided a long time ago, I think, so.
I'll incorporate those in my suggestions.
Now, do, if we're gonna continue it, do I still open to the public right now, or just continue it?
I think that the better approach would be when the language is, is kind of tightened up. That's when you allow the public to have it, because the comments you have now, it's better for them to see, because they may be addressed, and then superfluous and everything else.
Okay.
I object, really, this should be a public hearing for anybody that wants to speak, because it was posted, and I have some suggestions.
But we're gonna change on what we're talking about.
I know that, that's why I'm here to, here to change things, too. I review this somewhat.
Tony?
It's gonna be a waste of some of your time, because when I have to come back here two months or three months, I'll have to make these suggestions then, because there are a lot of flaws here, and you're agreeing to them already, and.
All right, Peter, just go introduce yourself, and.
Oh, these are his suggestions?
Yeah.
We have, we have his copy.
Yeah, we, we have.
The solicitor does as well.
You've got them? I didn't know you received them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to me, I think that's a better way to direct this problem, address this problem. The problem is setbacks, putting things in setbacks, accessory units, et cetera, and the portion about the front yards, it's been stated in this town from the beginning that there should be no accessory buildings in the front yards. That's been there forever, and this has not changed, and he's not suggesting that it will be changed, too. Why do we don't want to put things in our front yard, accessory buildings? Because this is gonna urbanize the town of Tiverton. It's gonna urbanize it. I mean, build it up to density of structures. You'll have one little structure up front, then you'll have another one, and et cetera, et cetera, that'll change the appearance of the town. You do have a right to ask for a variance. Everybody has the right to ask for a variance, for two feet, whatever, and most of the times you'll get that. So it's not an obstacle to, you know, get a building in your front yard if it's done properly. But the idea is to protect the town. So there are some areas, I don't know if you want to make them public now, or you make them public later, like the definition, like to improve the definition. The planning board is using identification. Shall I cover in detail, or you want to just get a brush of this?
Well, actually, if I may, and I beg your pardon, Mr. Money, because I, I do have a copy of what you have, it's gonna incorporate. copy of what you have, it's going to incorporate it in my comments. I think your point's well taken. But the council does have your...
I didn't real, I know I sent them to the clerk, I didn't know if you did receive them.
We have them.
And I did, now I'd like to make one correction then on the definition, I'm looking it over. You definitely need a good definition, and it's under Article II definitions, and it's under C of that Article II. And it should be a complete number four, a new number, because I believe the planning board is calling that 3A. 3A is already posted in the ordinance, and it's relating to adult video stores or books. And it's under usage, and it should be under usage, it's supposed to be a complete new definition. So, I would put it as four and change all the other ones below it, renumber them as, you know, properly numbered. Somebody took a shortcut, didn't want to do the work. So, an accessory subject, structure, a subordinate structure with two or more sides walls, and having a connected roof, comma, this is the correction I want to make now, detach from the principal structure but located on the same lot or parcel as the principal, principal structure, the use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the principal structure. So, worrying about farm stand is not a problem. It's not a four-wall or two-wall structure. No problems there, you can do that, worry about this.
A gazebo would be the same thing, then. You could put a gazebo in the front yard then.
No, we're not. Because, as you read the rest of the ordinance, well, shall I cover that now?
No, okay.
It's, we're stating now, in the future, and in the past, that there's no accessory items, structures placed in the front yards. We're not changing that.
So, you can't put a doghouse in the front yard?
Can't sell firewood in the front yard.
No, you couldn't put a doghouse in the front yard according to this.
Yeah, most people wouldn't like to have a neighborhood, a doghouse in the front yard.
I know one house that has a doghouse in the front yard.
If you do want, if you do want to do that...
I'm going to get in it in about a minute.
If you do want to do that, wait a minute, wait a minute, you can do it. If you want to do it, you go through the proper channels, you get a variance.
Yeah, but for a doghouse, you have to go to the zoning board? That's ridiculous.
Well, it's kind of stupid, really. And you can laugh at it, because it's a good joke.
All right. But you...
But it's the way it reads.
You do understand what Joan's saying, though.
I don't think you need a variance for putting a flagpole in your front yard either. It's a structure, it's not, it's not going to be no big deal. Put a flagpole, put a post, put a lamp post. We're getting carried away and making mo hills into mountains.
All right, so we'll discuss this again when we continue it. Because I let Mr. Mona speak, does anyone else want to say something right now? Or wait until I continue, a month, you said, Tony? So, it'll be the first meeting in March?
Like to be able to get it back to the planning board also.
All right. So, somewhere in, somewhere in March, okay, Nancy?
One more point, Denise.
Yes, continue it to a date certain.
One more point, which is not covered by the planning board, or anybody else brought it up, that the planning board dropped the category about heights on accessory buildings. That's a back, taking a step backwards. That's a standard procedure format throughout the state of Rhode Island regulations. Doing that, you're going to cause a lot of problems, especially like on barns, because barns are sometimes are more than the height of a house, silos are higher, and the definition covers a universe of zoning, not only residential, but general, commercial, highway, commercial, and industrial parks. There are structures that are higher than the buildings. But taking that out is a bad, going backwards. You can see, right here is Middletown, they show it right there, and they do a good job doing their zoning in relationships to these accessory buildings. So, we'll cover it again.
Yeah.
I want to make sure it's really covered, and if you want to talk to me, I'll talk to you. There are a lot of flaws here, and we shouldn't do it, and we should do laws in the correct way.
Thank you. On the 26th, which one would you rather have? Because you've got to get it through the planning board, too, right?
I'm thinking March 12th.
Okay. So, I'd like someone to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to continue item B1 to March 12th.
Is that a regular meeting, March 12th?
Yes.
It is, yes.
Second, don't worry, it's something extra. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, thank you, Peter. Who seconded?
Madam, or...
Joan.
Joan, yeah.
Yeah. I thought so, but... Okay, continuing with public hearings. Public hearing date to be determined on Article 4, Section 5H, public utility uses, Section 6J, open recreation uses, and Article 10, Section 3, parking, storage, and use of major recreational equipment in residential districts. Planning board recommendation, December 6, 2017. Planning board recommendation, January 10, 2018. Request from Attorney Michael Kelly to continue public hearing to February 12th. Is Attorney Kelly here?
Yes.
Hi, Attorney Kelly.
Hi, actually, I'm Michael Minogue, I'm from Attorney Kelly's office.
Okay. What is your reason for wanting to continue it?
Well, as we indicated in our correspondence that we submitted, there was the planning board meeting on December 5th. Subsequent to that meeting, the planning board chair sent a letter to the town council indicating that the board did not have enough information at that time to make a recommendation for or against the proposed amendment. And then shortly before the January 9th planning board meeting, we received some correspondence from a couple town residents through their attorney, Andrew Tights, and then also a report that was submitted at that January 9th planning board meeting from a consulting planner that they had hired. Over our objection, because it was beyond the 45-day time clock, the planning board did consider that report by the consulting planner, Vincent Murray, and then changed its recommendation, which is indicated in their January 10th letter to the town council. So, as we indicated, we'd like some additional time to try to address some of these concerns that the planning board had, and also that these residents had that were opposed to the proposed amendment. And we hope that in the three-week time period that we've requested, we could submit an amended proposed amendment that might address some of those concerns, and hopefully meet with Attorney Tights and his clients to discuss those issues.
Now, can I continue it if they're going to change their proposal?
The answer is yes, you can. But if it's going to be a radical departure, that doesn't bear any relationship to what is proposed now, then you'd have to re-advertise.
Yeah, because what I'm saying is, if we don't, in a public hearing, if we don't actually advertise exactly what we're going to be speaking about, we can't do that. So, if you do have a radical change, then it's not really continuing it, it's rescheduling it with your new proposal. It's only because someone will bring this up.
I think if we went to the second meeting in February, that would probably give us enough time to do that. I forget the date that the second meeting is scheduled for, but...
Now, in the meanwhile, could you send your proposal to Attorney De Sisto? And then if he feels it's a radical change, then we can make some decisions based on that. If he doesn't feel it's a radical change, and it's advertised correctly the first time, then we can continue it to the February meeting. You see what I'm saying?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. The only, the only consideration we have at this point is, we are studying a couple of the issues, so we can certainly send him a draft, but it's not going to be the final version that we'd be submitting. It might have some minor changes to it, but it's generally going to be the same substantively to what we'd submit as the amended proposed amendment.
I'm fine with that.
You're comfortable with that?
I'm only concerned with the notice, that's all.
It's the advertising, which we will, if we do it, somebody may object, and then we'll have to start all over again. So, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Okay, yeah, we can send Attorney De Sisto a copy of a draft, and we'll take his guidance.
So, our second...
Thank you.
Our second meeting date is February 26th.
Okay.
Oh, Madam President, I have two other public hearings on that date as well.
Big ones?
SOLA and the Stonebridge.
We could probably get, this will be the bigger one. Yeah, yeah, I think we could probably do it, and then we'll just watch out what else we schedule that date. So, the 26th would be good for you, or the 12th? Which one would you rather?
Well, we requested the 12th, but if there's, if there's a concern about having to re-advertise, I think the 26th would give us enough time.
A little more time to get it to Tony? Okay. Does that sound okay, Trish?
Does, I just have a question for this solicitor. If, if in the end, the proposal is substantially different, are we in a position to refer that to the planning board?
Yeah.
Or...
Suppose we wanted to refer it back to the planning board?
That's the main concern that I have. And I'm not saying that there's going to be a major change, but I do have that concern. And that would have to go back to the planning board at some time if it's a wholly new proposal.
So, could we then request the 12th, and we'll agree that I'll send a copy of the draft to Attorney De Sisto to review, and then we'll take it?
And then if he feels it's a drastic change, then we can make a plan.
Okay.
If it's not a drastic change, it'll be fine. It's just the advertisement I'm worried about, because we've run into problems where we've had to delay things for months because it wasn't properly advertised. So, that's what I'm concerned about. If it's not properly advertised, this could go on forever.
Kind of like the planning board, it wasn't properly advertised, whether they reversed it.
We just have to be careful, because things get delayed just because of not good advertisement, or not proper advertisement. Or sometimes the papers forget to advertise it, so...
Not even March 12th.
Madam President?
What's the matter, Nancy?
I'm just trying to see if, in fact, it does not get through to the 12th. I'm going to have to advertise soon to get it through to the March 12th.
Well, actually, that's what we're going to do, March 12th, right?
No.
February.
February 12th?
February 12th, yeah.
Really? You're going to be busy.
Yeah, I'm afraid I'm not going to reach these deadlines for it.
Well, I'm, well, no, no, if we continue it to February 12th, and Tony reads the proposal and says, yes, Denise, it's not, it's not that different, we can go on, then we can go on to February 12th. The only problem we're going to hit, if Tony reads it and says, no, it's a different content, then we'll have to schedule one.
Okay.
A new meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody on the council also?
Yes.
All right. This is just to make sure we are covered for our advertisement, February 12th, to have that meeting.
Madam President?
Counselor?
I thought we were continuing it to the 26th.
No, he changed his mind.
He wanted it to be 12th.
Oh, we haven't done it yet, I got to make a motion.
Yeah, he, he's asking for the 12th now.
Okay.
And I see your logic, if we wait till the 26th, and we have to re-advertise, we're not doing this till April.
Right, yeah, it could be one of the other then. Okay.
Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue item 2B, or B2, to February 12th. Second.
Now, we're going to do discussion, any discussion from the council? Any questions? Okay, some motions been made in second, to continue to the February 12th, as long as everything goes as planned. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to just take a couple of minutes so that the room can file out, because I'm sure that's what's about to happen.